To start, um, with the approval of the agenda as presented, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Rocks. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
A second by Tony. Further discussion? Kevin, you said that you had some.
The only thing I want to just highlight in case people look this over the weekend or whenever is we added the Coach Family Collaborative Agreement, which is, I think every two years, could be annually, I forget. There's no worries or whatever. It's non-financial. We get services and money from it, but I just wanted to point that out. That's the only addition that I got.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Um, I did have something that I was gonna save it for at the consent agenda, but um, it's a little bit timely for this one, too. Um, you're gonna be, for the new school board members, you guys are gonna be finding out best practices and stuff like. Thought about before, like, why don't we read the, um, the mission statement before every school board meeting? I'm not saying that's something we can do, or that we can do, but it's something we should do. But it's like options like that, like what are best practices through, as you're going through the school board training and stuff like that, that we can take back to our school board meetings? We'll have some other things that we'll talk about later, about how we'll discuss what we're, what we've been learning and things, and things like that. But just anytime you see something, you're like, hey, why aren't we doing that? I'm open to different things, and as is Kevin, and I'm sure so. It just, sometimes it has to get brought up. Um, okay, so, we have a motion by, or any further discussion?
Ted, can I just make sure that the skating piece was added?
Uh, Kevin, I forwarded that to you. Do you have an update on that?
No, they'll come in February, just so you're aware. I've been in touch with all of them and, um, sorry, I don't know how muffled I am. Just so, normally, we bring it, we get it about this time of year and bring it in February, but I wanna work to make sure summer hockey, both boys and girls, and figure skating, we get everything we need from all of them, and then I'll bring them in February. I've talked to all three, and it's in the process.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, he had responded that he had taken care of it, but I didn't know how, so that worked. That's good. Um, okay, any other questions about the agenda? Thank you, Tony. I have a motion by Rocks and a second by Tony. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Ra- uh, Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Deech?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Carries unanimously six zero. Moving on to everybody's favorite part, the presentation of Elks January Student of the Month, Bryant Koenig and Chloe Sullivan.
And I won't be doing them, and Chloe's with us. Bryant is basketball tonight, so he will come, uh, next month, uh, if it works. So Chloe, if you wanna come up, just so, it's kinda dark, but at least people can kinda see you. Uh, Chloe Sullivan is the Elks January Female Student of the Month. Chloe is a very committed and faithful student who is always excited to help others. She has been on the A honor roll throughout her entire high school career. Chloe was a member of the Falls High School Student Council for three years. She has also been very involved in extracurricular activities, as a participant in volleyball, basketball, and track and field, and is currently the captain of our girls' basketball team. When not involved in athletics, Chloe has actively volunteered through student council at the, okay, sorry, actively volunteered through student council at the villa, as well as working with youth in our community at Saturday morning basketball. During the summer months, she works for Voyager's National Park. Chloe's future plans are to join the Minnesota Army National Guard, then attend school for park management, and continue working for the National Park Service throughout the United States. Chloe Sullivan, the Elks January Female Student of the Month.
Good job.
Practice hard.
Awesome. Uh, congratulations, Chloe. Moving on to the public open forum, um, I didn't put it out beforehand, or I hadn't heard. If anybody wanted to talk to him in public open forum, I would be open to it, uh, right now. Somebody's interested that they'd like to bring, uh, to the board? All right, um, so then, I, I hope, I, I hope that this is fine, that I keep on buttoning like this, but I just wanna make sure that the new board members kinda get that, um, how some of this stuff works just going forward. And, uh, so like, um, with the open forum, usually what happens is people sign up beforehand. They're gen- uh, uh, if it's going to inhibit our meeting, um, and there's too many people signed up, we can make people combine, uh, time. Um, a lot of that is up to the board chair. Um, and, and then we, cause it is, it, we don't have to have a public open forum legally. It's kind of like, uh, best practice to have one, and so, um, so we wanna, I, I, I'm, I'm a huge in favor of the public open forum and wanna keep it and everything like that, and so, that's just a little insight. Um, people can generally sign up the day before and, um, during COVID, I've been a lot more lenient on, uh, some of the practices of, um, of that, just to accommodate some of the Zoom, you know, problems that go with it. So anyways, uh, sorry about that again. Well, I'm not sorry, I mean, I won't have said it if I'm sorry.
No, that's good.
Um, I know I had a lot of questions when I first got on, and there's other times we can talk more about that type of stuff, but just as it's, as it's coming up, um, okay, so, uh, we have nobody for public open forum. Uh, I will entertain, uh, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A moved. Second.
I got a motion by Emily and a second by Joanne. The reason why I smiled at the beginning of this one, because I actually talked to Kevin about something I wanted to say on this section, too. Um, so after I just said I was sorry for doing that again.
And was it Joanne or Jen? I'm not sure.
Uh, Joanne and Emily were the, uh, Emily was first and Joanne was second. Okay, so I think I talked about this at the consent agenda, and there, um, you generally don't debate stuff on the consent agenda, um, and I think I touched on that maybe last week. However, uh, what I did wanna talk about is, on the consent agenda, um, there is something, there's a lot of first readings of school board policies and second readings of school board policies. Uh, Jen kinda knows how this works a little bit better, because she paid more attention in the last class, uh, when we were down at the training for the school board, um, and of course Kevin knows, you know, better than everybody. But, um, what we do is a first reading and then a second reading, and if there's not, no changes or anything like that, I think it's considered adopted. Um, Kevin or Jen, feel free to correct me on that. Um, and the other thing about that is, we very rarely change, um, policies from MSBA, uh, policies. So the ones that they suggest are generally the ones that, um, we, that we adopt, with slight, um, exceptions, and they're usually not like anything controversial. It's more like clerical exceptions because of location, or who knows what, who knows what it could be. So, uh, those are heavily vetted, uh, by the MSBA, and, um, the updates that they change are often grammatical or things like that. But they also highlight, I'm usually in red, the changes to school boards. Do read it this time. And next time, you can, uh, save some time by reading the changes in red. So anyways, um, uh, just some more information. Um, moving on, we have a motion by Emily and a second by Joanne. Is there any further discussion about the consent agenda?
If I can just point a couple things out, Ted.
Yep.
Just so everyone's aware, uh, looking at number five, and I'm just gonna, um, give everyone a heads up. Um, this is hiring of, um, an employ- uh, an employee that is a relation to a supervisor. Um, the supervisor was not part of the, uh, interview process, um, all aware, and I just want everyone to know, um, where we're at. It is temporary. You can see there's an end date of June 3rd. Um, so I just, I'm trying to be upfront and honest on there. The other thing I just wanted to point out, which is not very common, but you see on number, I don't know if it's sixteen on mine, but there's a, uh, first reading of a policy that's actually being removed. And I just wanna point out, it's not taking away, if you read that, and it references the old profiles of learning. We still have, like, in other policies, the number of required credits for graduation and this, you know, and some other stuff that's in there. So in this case, it's actually a policy that they're proposing we take off the books, and we don't see that very often. Most of the time, it's just tweaking language, updating. So I'm just pointing that out if anyone was questioning that. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody need clarification on anything else? Okay. We got a motion by Emily and a second by Joanne, uh, without hearing any further discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Ra- uh, Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Deech? Rocks, you there? Roxanne Scopes to Deech, did you hear that last part? You're muted, Rock, sorry.
I'm sorry, I had a dog problem. I had stuff.
So we're voting on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Roxanne Scopes to Deech, yes. Uh, Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Uh, it carries unanimously six zero. Um, moving on to action items. Um, action items, and action items, of course, this is where you can discuss, you know, anything that's relevant on each topic, so. Um, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations, I will entertain a motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
I got a motion by Jen and a second by, um, Rocks. Resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations, whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas International Falls School Board encourages the support of districts' educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be resolved, the school board of International Falls Public School ISD number 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations received, Betty Ewald for band trombone, saxophone, lesson books, and manuscript paper to the Falls Education Fund. Oh, okay, that's what she donated. Um, Betty Ewald donated the trombone, saxophone, lesson books, and manuscript. The Falls Education Foundation, uh, donated to the Falls Elementary School $5,800. Falls High School $4,831.14. And Bronco Athletics, uh, $8,339.63. The Bronco Football Booster donated a half of Charter Bus to Two Harbors, uh, with a value of $633.30. Box Tops for Education to FES was $56.30. Up North Builders donated, uh, for the Arena Scoreboard sponsorship, $1,500. Um, I had a motion by Jen and a second by Rocks. Um, is there any further discussion on any of these, uh, items? Okay. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Oh, uh, and also, thank you very much. That's all very generous from our supporters. Um, roll call. Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Yes.
Bruce Ra- uh, I keep on calling his name, it's in the list. I do it every time. Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Deech?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Carries unanimously, uh, six zero. Moving on to action item number two. Res- uh, resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and the reasons therefore. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We got a motion by Rocks. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Jen. So, uh, a little bit about this one, um, it's, it's scarier than it sounds, um, Kevin will explain.
Just so everyone's aware, this along with the next one, our common practice this time of the year, it mainly directs us to start moving forward and planning for next year. There may be times we reduce positions, there may be times we add positions, but if we don't, the board doesn't direct us to do this, we really can't do any reductions that may be so. We do this every year, no matter if we reduce or don't reduce, so to speak. So it's a, um, it's a practice. Let's just put it away, if we need to do it, so that we can move forward and we'll see where we go, okay?
Yeah.
We're not cutting anyone tonight, firing anyone, doing anything like that. It's just a step in the process to plan and.
And, and, and any, any real reductions that were systemic anyways, we would definitely know about as a board.
Everything comes to the board if there's reductions, so I mean, it's just part of the process.
Um, any other questions, uh, comments about that? Okay. Um, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ted, do you wanna read it or not technically?
Oh, okay, yeah. So I was gonna ask you that. Um, I do have it, uh, right here if I need to. Um, you want me to, do you think it's best practice to read it?
I would. I would.
Okay. Um, member, was it Jen that introduced this one? Rox and then second. Rox, okay. Member Roxanne, uh, Scopes to Deech introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the financial conditions of the school district may dictate that the school board reduce expenditures and, whereas there may be a decline in student enrollment projec- projections. And whereas reductions in expenditures and decrease in student enrollment projections may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailments of programs. And whereas a determination must be made as to which teacher contracts must be terminated and not renewed, and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits and affecting discontinuance of positions. Be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District number 361 as follows. The school board hereby directs superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economy, economies in the school district and reduce expenditures and make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions as needed. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member Jen Windows, and upon a vote being taken thereof, the following voted in favor of, uh, we will do a roll call now. Um, Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Ra- uh, oh, my God. I'm telling you, I don't know what's going on. I'm gonna just keep on doing that. Uh, Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Deech?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
I'm blaming that I'm still at work and my brain's still in work mode. Um, okay.
Ted, Ted, can I speak to number three before we actually deal with it and just do a little explanation?
Yeah, it'll give me time to blink after having to not blink reading that whole darn thing last night.
Okay, ju- just so the, uh, board is aware, um, the government put this Family First Coronavirus Recovery Act in place for, um, public institutions, uh, to follow. Again, it, it was an unfunded mandate where we were required to have eighty hours of leave, um, for public employees. And we did that. It expired as of December 31st. There's not been anything to renew it, and so I'm just being upfront, um, the board does not have to adopt this resolution. Um, the question is, um, what do we do? Do we just have, you know, uh, people, is there sick leave that they have? Do we, um, do unpaid leave for those that don't, don't have it? Um, do we, it's kind of out of a fairness thing, we continue the program on, not giving people another eighty hours? And so my recommendation, and again, districts are doing a variety of things, I'm just gonna be honest with you. My, my recommendation is, let's continue this on. It has an expiration of, I think, the end of March. And it's not, like I said, another eighty hours. It's honoring it and trying to be equitable, if that's the right word, to those that haven't used it. Um, and of course, you have to have qualifying conditions and qualify to use it. So if that is so desired, we should move forward with the resolution. So.
Kevin, did you say it is not an additional number of hours?
No, what, what I'm getting is, for instance, I'm just gonna use myself as an example, I did not use this leave. So I would still qualify. I'm using myself. If I had used my eighty hours, you don't get another eighty hours. It's, you know, if you've used it, you're, like I said, you're using your other sick leave, taking unpaid leave, you're not losing your job if it's for COVID, you know, type deal. So it's, it's more of a equitable, let's continue it. Yeah, we're starting to get vaccines and different things, and as that rolls out, hopefully, we won't need such a thing as this.
Okay.
So I, I guess, uh, one thing that I would bring up, um, is that we would want to make sure that this, um, we have, of course, the new stuff's gonna start rolling out, probably as early as, you know, two days from now as far as legislation, COVID-related stuff, and, um, I, I like, I would just say, let's be, uh, make sure that whatever new stuff rolls out with, this doesn't conflict with in some sort of way, because I think there's gonna be some, you know, type of, a lot of relief from in that.
And this, again, just so you're aware, this is coming from MSBA. This is their recommended resolution if a district's going to continue down this road, so I would recommend it.
Does anybody have any other, uh, points of discussion they wanna bring up? Okay, um, well, we, uh, don't, we're actually, we're, I started discussing it without, um, having a motion, uh.
And you don't have to, you know, if there's an action.
Yeah, so it would, and I would entertain a motion, hold on, let me read it as it's, uh, written. Entertain a motion to adopt resolution to extend deadline for leaves granted by the Families First Corona Recovery Act.
So moved. Joanne?
Got a motion by Joanne. Do I have a second?
A second.
Was that Emily?
Yep.
Okay, so I got a motion by Joanne and a second by Emily. Um, now this one, we would typically have kind of a discussion debate about it. Um, does anybody have anything, um, addition that they'd like to discuss? I, 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 I for one see, uh, I just, I just, I, I see, um, I mean, no reason not to. I guess it's, it's, uh, tobacco with, um, superintendent covers, you know, recommendations on. Uh, all right, so we have a motion and a second. We will do a roll call. Hearing no further discussion. Um, Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Ted Saxton? Yes. Roxanne Scopes to Deech?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Okay, it carries unanimously. I'm gonna read this one, uh, also as well, right, Kevin?
Well, yeah, I'll bring it back up. Yeah.
Uh, I have it up. Don't worry about it. Um, extend deadline for leaves granted by Families First Coronavirus Recovery Act. Whereas the Family First Coronavirus Recovery Act required covered employers to provide up to eighty hours of paid emergency sick leave, up to twelve weeks of partially paid expanded family and medical leave. And whereas the requirement to provide said leave ended on December 31st, 2020. And whereas the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021 provides for the covered employers to extend the deadline for eligible employees to use any unused hours, days of leave defined in the FF CRA through March 31st, 2021. Be it resolved, International Falls Public School ISD 361, she'll extend the deadline for the eligible employee to use any unused hours slash a days off of the FF CR, paid emergency sick leave and partially paid expanded family medical leave according to the guidelines outlined in the FF CRA through March 31st, 2021. Adopted this nineteenth day of January 21, and we did the roll call vote, so we don't need to. Uh, moving on to action item number four. Uh, approve additions of sections A1 substitute position with prior district experience to at-will policy. I will entertain a motion.
I'm over.
Got a motion by Tony? A second by Jen? Um, okay, further discussion? Kevin has some stuff.
Yeah, yeah, ju- just so the board's aware, I've asked for a couple positions here, um, to be, what's happened? I'm just gonna give you an example. Like, at the beginning of the school year, we were short on secretaries. And we actually were fortunate enough to have, um, experienced a prior, what do I say? The prior employee secretary that, you know, just left us come back in and truly do the job. And so to pay them at least at a starting wage instead of roughly thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour, the sub rate. And so the same, we've, we've had a situation where custodian is coming in, um, is actually licensed in the boiler, running the boilers, and not even getting starting pay. So I'm asking for permission to change the at-will, so that if someone is a retired prior in these two positions, that we pay them at a higher rate, because they're, I'm gonna say, truly doing the job. Um, and, and again, it doesn't take away from someone that just comes in and substitutes as a secretary, you know, and does, I'm gonna say, part of the task. They, they, these people are, can do the full task. So I'm just asking for, um, place them on starting pay.
And you have further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, uh, we had a motion by Tony and a second by Jen. Hearing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scopes to Deech?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Carries unanimously six zero. Uh, moving on to action item number five, set budget work session dates for February 22nd and March 8th at 5:00 PM. Uh, so, um, board members, uh, do those dates work well for your calendar? And if you need a kind of an idea of what we'll be talking about, Kevin, can you give me a?
Okay, ju- just so the group is aware, th- these are to start planning and looking at next year's budget. And so, um, typically, in the past, we've kind of done, you know, one of the first ones, kind of an orientation on a little bit of finance, get into some of the planning. It's the start of our budgeting. And, and so, um, we put two dates, we technically don't need act, we just need to agree, and we'll set, set them as working sessions. So if these dates aren't good, you know, give us something else, or when would you like them? It's mainly thrown it out there so that we, A, get moving and start the process, and, um, obviously, COVID can change things, but, um, right now, we'd be doing it similar to how we are and less things change, but, um, the business office myself can handle that, and like I say, we're open to whatever dates. We just wanna get it moving before we get too far along.
What was the second date? March what?
8th.
They both work for me.
Yeah, they both work for me.
They're good for me as well. They're fine for me as well.
Okay, and for some reason, some major conflict comes up there, tentative, and we can check again and about rescheduling something, um, so. I, I, but hearing nothing else, uh, we'll assume that those dates will be the dates that we will meet to set the budget. Um, okay, well, that's at the end of the action items. Um, moving on to the administrative reports. Uh, you said Ella wasn't here today, Kevin?
I, I do have a, uh, a report, if you'd like me to read it.
Oh, yeah, I'd love that. She's got the best reports. Let's hear it.
This one's shorter than normal, so anyway, this, uh, was emailed from Ella. Uh, she apologized she could not be here. Uh, student council would like to welcome you, school board members. We are happy to have you on and look forward to working with you in the years to come. The council's been using January to plan events for the rest of the year. February will entitle our, uh, Winter Sports Week. The pep festival will be done via video. It will be filmed in segments throughout the week to respect safety guidelines. As for Valentine's Day, we have a treat planned for the students, and we'll also be selling roses again. In March, we are looking forward to more social media challenges. In March, we are looking forward to more social media challenges and another blood drive, uh, though the specifics are still to be figured out. That is all, thank you.
Awesome. Um, well, we appreciate that, Ella, even though you're not here, uh, thanks for sending it forward still. Uh, Melissa Tate, elementary principal, you're up.
First, I need to apologize for missing December's meeting, I don't know, it just like totally slipped my mind, and then I was listening to the meeting and was like, is Missia, is Missia, no, she's not, I don't know what that, COVID or.
We called in that.
Or what, but, um, sorry for that. So this month, we are at four sixty for student enrollment, we're up two from last month. And then, um, we have, uh, our preschool and kindergarten registration coming up in February, and that will obvi- obviously look different this year, we usually do an open house, last year we moved to just an evening open house, um, but we will not be having a typical open house due to COVID and registration will need to look different because typically we have people come and stand in line, um, so we are going to be moving to an online, um, registration system this year. We also are gonna be, um, changing up what we're offering based on, um, feedback from families and based on popularity of what people have registered for. So our Monday through Friday class for four-year-olds is by far our most popular class, the waitlist is usually quite long for that class, so next year we are gonna try to offer two sections of that, the Monday through Friday four-year-old class. And then our Tuesday, Thursday, three-year-old all-day is always the first, um, three-year-old class to fill up, so we'll be offering that. And then we'll still offer, um, two half-day classes, but they'll just run two days a week, now Wednesday and Friday, and in the morning, and then Wednesday and Friday in the afternoon. And then we'll continue to offer our, um, morning ECFE and our evening ECFE class on Monday. So we're gonna be trying that this year based on, you know, our, our past registrations. So we'll do an online, um, registration, and we will open it up to our current families first, and it'll be first come, first served to our current families, and then after our current families have opened, or have registered, we'll open it up for new students. So, um, and then of course, uh, we will have by appointment if people want to come in and view the classes, so we'll try that and see how that goes, and that would be the same for kindergarten registration, if they wanted to register by appointment. Otherwise, we probably will look at some kind of online registration system as well, and, um, I will have my secretaries call people on the census again to try to get a good handle on kindergarten numbers. So we'll still have those, um, numbers though by the end of February, so we should have them for the, well, we won't have them for the first work session, but we'd have them for the second work session in March. Um, let's see, right now at FES, we have no positive student cases, we have, um, seven students that are quarantining, um, because of positive family members, which three of them are just about coming out of quarantining, and then we have one district staff who's out waiting for test results, so that's really good. Um, we have seven of our distance learners coming back in person within the next week, with this weekend into next week, so that leaves us down to fifty-two distance learners that falls out. And then we will not be able to do our relay recess this year, of course, due to COVID, we were hoping things would look different by now, but they don't, so we won't be able to do that event. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much for that report, does anybody have any questions for, um, Missy regarding that report?
Missy, you have, I have a question.
Yep, good job.
Have you had many, many distance learners come back? I don't remember you mentioning that before, is that new? Have you had others come back, what brought them back?
That sporadically, we've had kids come back, um, I just decided to report this because this is a large amount that have, are choosing to come back, all within the, in the neck.
My son's going back, and, uh, part of the reason why is because our spirits are broken. So, we, we can't say enough about how much we appreciate the teachers and how, how much my wife appreciates them, um, but that's a big part of why we're coming back, it's just like, oh, can't take it anymore, there's so much home.
Yeah, I mean, most people have just said that they are pleased with the numbers have been low at school and the numbers in the community are lower, and so I suppose just feeling more comfortable now that vaccines are also rolling out, so I just thought it was, uh, good to mention because this was, like I said, a larger amount all at once, you know, and it is, it's spread out over this week and next week, but.
I might hit with the principals for that.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying, we were meeting with the principals and they were gonna kind of walk us through for each of my kids too, and kind of safety stuff, so, um, and I, I'd like the process of having them come back so far, so good job on that anyways. Jen, you were saying something?
Was there a space issue at all in any of those classes?
No, we, uh, had a com- when we added sections, I mean, we accommodated so we were to be able to accommodate our kids coming back if they chose to.
Have you had any, any or many families go the other way?
Uh, at the, earlier when we had, um, a teacher positive, there were two kids that went out and they haven't been back since then, but not really, so. And, I mean, still are able to accommodate six feet for the most part, but the guidelines, in the new guidelines for January eighteenth, do say you can go to three feet too if necessary, but we're still for the most part able to accommodate six feet in all of our classrooms. Fourth grade would be the only classroom that you might have a hard time accommodating six feet if everybody were to come back.
That's great, thanks, Missy.
Yep.
Yeah, the smiles on their faces when I told them that they could go back to school, they were very happy, well, two out of three were very happy. Um, uh, Tim Eversen, secondary principal, um, I didn't see Tim on, um.
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I'm in the library. Okay, we are, our enrollment is at five fifty-one, so we're even with what we were at last month. We are ending our quarter two semester one this Friday, and on Monday, we have a teacher in service, so there'll be no classes on January twenty-fifth, and then we start quarter three semester two on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. And we've had a number of students moving both ways. Um, right now, seventh grade, our numbers are starting to get up there, where we're close to our hybrid limits in some of the classes. So we, we have enabled families to move in and out of hybrid all semester, we haven't limited to any certain times, and we've had at least four within the last couple days that are wanting to come back now at semester time, so that's good news because the students who are here at least two days seem to be more successful, and not saying that the full distance learners aren't successful, but it does help if the students are here at least two days. The guidance office is beginning to prepare for registration for next year's courses, and we are planning this year to do our registration online, it's something that we've talked about in the past, and the guidance office right now is working on getting things updated so that we can actually make that work this spring, and our winter sports seasons are underway. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody have any questions for Tim?
I'll just say, I, I think it's nice, Tim, that you've been so flexible to let kids come back and forth, and I'm sure it's been, um, helped make it more convenient for families, and so I appreciate that you did that. And I hope when you do registration that, um, th- there'll be some version of tenth grade orientation like we had before, because I think that was really helpful to know what options are there for eleventh graders, and I imagine you have some plan for it.
Yes, we're gonna have to come up with some virtual, we will zoom that meeting, that tenth grade meeting again, to talk about the college and the schools and the different options.
Um, thank you. Kevin Grover, superintendent?
Okay, um, just a variety, I have a long list here in no specific order, just to give the board an update, we did our first saliva testing, uh, event last, I'm gonna say Tuesday slash Wednesday. Uh, the Tuesday, we went, uh, it was kind of a test run, but we offered to, uh, food service workers, because not all food services here on Wednesday, and we also offered it to the bus drivers, and then on Wednesday, it was open to the rest of the staff. Um, I'm gonna say it went fairly well, I do wanna say, um, you know, participation was not overly high, and I'm just gonna leave it at that, obviously, it's voluntary, um, I don't, I didn't calculate an exact percentage, but I'm gonna maybe guess thirty, thirty-five percent, um, forty percent, somewhere in there, of people exercised. I guess I'm hopeful as time goes on and people find out how easy it was and things like that, it'll go up, it costs nothing, but, um, it'll happen every two weeks, so, um, it'll happen a week from Wednesday slash Tuesday slash Wednesday again, and so, um, open to all employees, so, uh, we'll keep going there. Last, uh, Friday, I, um, got con- or had conversation actually with Leah, but, um, Public Health contacted Leah and, uh, gave her a heads up that, uh, very possible in the near future, they would have some extra vaccine and school personnel would qualify for that. Not talking to people, there are some school staff that qualify in one A, like the school nurse, um, this is in the one B, and so, um, it prompted us to start getting a list going, you should have seen that email, and again, board members are included in there, I'm not gonna say you're gonna have a high priority, kind of like myself, I'm not high on the priority list, there's many people ahead of us, I'm just being honest, but if you want on, you're, you're an employee, you can get on that list, it doesn't mean you can't try getting on a list somewhere else, whether it's through an occu- your occupation or something. But anyway, we, I sent an email out, you saw that, started getting a list created, obviously, then on Monday, um, Sunday night, we were notified of a eight o'clock call with the governor, or I should say, uh, briefing on what the governor was going to propose. So we found out at eight in the morning that, um, at two o'clock, he would, uh, release info that a pilot vaccination program that is, uh, centered around the service cooperative region, so we belong to the Northeast Service Co-op, and each school would be allotted, you know, a small number or a percentage proportionally, and so we needed to get our list in place and, um, notify those people, uh, after the two o'clock embargo was lifted, and then they had to register by midnight, and they would then go to some testing site in our region, and they're gonna give preference to educators, um, for evening and weekend appointments. So, um, I met with administration as well as the nurse, and to be honest, we took, we got seven vaccines, so we, um, prioritized, um, the administration as well as, um, school nurse, and, uh, notified those seven people, invited them to do the application process, and so at least we're off and running. I'm not gonna, um, poke holes or, you know, give my true opinions on where we should be or whatever, but, so, um, that's off and running. Um, and more are still continuing to, um, indicate they wanna be included on the list, we're actually meeting in the morning with our planning group to, um, what we were gonna prioritize, but continue prioritizing because there's a lot to take into when you start, you know, just saying, where do bus drivers go, where do custodians go, where do teachers go, what about different, uh, groups of teachers, you know, what about paras, what about secretaries? We gotta get that all laid out, and again, everyone's not gonna agree, we're not talking people here, we're just talking those positions. We will get a hierarchy because just like today at, I'm gonna guess, eleven o'clock, uh, Public Health notified us, we had four spots available, we needed people at one o'clock, and so we need to have our stuff ready. So unfortunately, those seven are gonna get their vaccine, but we were able to get four more to go and get first round done today, and they didn't have to travel, and so, I mean, um, and of course, I'll be honest, it's, it's creating, I don't wanna know if animosity is the right word, but those that want the vaccine, you know, want it, and why do some get it? Maybe you didn't get even a whole group, you know, like say I was giving it to social studies, well, why do only two out of the three if they all wanted it?
Uh, it sounds like it's better than like in other states, or not other states, but I'm hearing a lot of nationally where some of it's going the ways, and maybe that's just what they're trying.
Well, but, and, and again, I, I thank Public Health for, you know, including us, and that's what they don't want, they want if they have, I'm just gonna say fifty doses out, they wanna make sure they have people waiting, you know, that if they need it, and so we're right on board and we will continue and take anyone we can get, so that's off and running. Um, Martin Luther King Day, um, just to give you a heads up, I did get one call yesterday, um, questioning why we were in session, uh, Chair Saxton also got an email that he forwarded on, and I just wanna bring it up, there's no action tonight, but it's something we've talked about in the past, we will come back to it when we set our calendar for, um, the next year. There are legal holidays that we can't be in session, and then there's other days such as Martin Luther King Day, Veterans Day, Columbus Day, you know, that we have choices or President's Day, I should say, um, that, uh, we gotta make choices on, and so it will come back up for discussion, and we, we just, we're aware and, and, um.
I, I just add to that, that it really is up to the board, so, um, and I said that in explaining, writing the outline, um, I tried to be as clear as possible about the process and said, we can, I mean, honestly, there, truly, we can, uh, next year, if that's a priority of the board, absolutely, we can have it.
And then other things to consider, um, you know, does staff work, you know, for instance, next Monday is, is a, no, no student day, but it's a staff work day. Do you do the same thing, you know, for instance, Martin Luther King Day, or is it a complete off day, y- you know, type deal? We'll talk about it, we'll even have more discussion than we normally have had, obviously in this past year, um, it maybe would have been even more important, and I'm just throwing it out there with the events that transpired this summer and throughout the fall and so on. So I just want the board aware, I'm not saying I've gotten a call here and there on Veterans Day before, because often we take like a Thursday, Friday off or a day off in that week, but usually, in fact, I don't think we've ever had Veterans Day off that I'm aware of, why not pick that day if you're gonna have a day off? So I'm just throwing out to the board, we'll have some more discussion before we actually build the calendars and before we approve anything, so.
Kevin, we also, yeah, it wasn't just Ted and you that got emails, I, I think Joanne, you got them, and I got them too, so, just in case people are listening to this meeting, they should know that we truly did get those emails.
Yep, yep, I just, I, I told the person I talked to that I would at least bring it up so that in the event that I would start to lose my mind and forget, which does happen, um, the board can keep me on my toes or, or keep it in the back of their mind. Um, the next thing, the MSBA convention, I, um, online convention, again, everyone was invited, it's three weeks, last Thursday was the first week, or first part of the session, um, I partook, um, from the opening through, uh, noon, I couldn't listen to the commissioner at noon, um, I will partake in some of it this Thursday as well as the following, and one of the conversations that a board member brought up is can we set a working session or working sessions to come and at least share our thoughts, doesn't have to be a long session, but, so, just so the board's aware, I set a session for this Thursday, we can either do it or we can, you know, wait till the last Thursday, you know, following that, or whatever you want, but if we didn't set it, if we want it as close as this Thursday, not wait till the whole thing's done, we wouldn't meet our seventy-two hour notice. So I'm just asking, and I don't know how many of the board participated or to what extent, what's your wishes, um, so?
Um, uh, well, I, like I said the other last time we met, I'm open to, um, any type of Zoom meeting or meeting, uh, in regards to this, um, I'm also open to just do it at the next Thursday after it's all done, I didn't catch the last one, it'll be getting caught, uh, as I'm understanding they're recording, and you just gotta log into the ABCO.
It, it's recorded through the next week, so this Thursday will be gone, or last Thursday will be gone is my understanding, a- after this Thursday's production, they're replacing it?
So that's what I'm doing tonight, um.
I'm just giving you a heads up, that's my understanding.
All right, well, yeah, you gave me something to do tonight, it'll be fun to go after one.
I wasn't able to pull a bunch of it from last week, so I guess for me, it would make more sense to do like a wrap-up after all three of them, I don't know how anybody else scales, but.
Yeah, it's fun, it's fun when you're actually in person, they go back to the hotel room and catch up, or in the lobby and catch up on the cool words, but, and maybe it's.
I just didn't have as many notes as I normally do, maybe it was the session that I took, but.
I didn't have a lot either, I mean, I think, I think doing it on the third, the third Thursday will be fine.
Okay.
I would agree with that too, as a wrap-up.
Okay, so just so that everyone's aware, we will cancel the work session for this Thursday, we will set a new one for whatever, the following Thursday, does five o'clock work? And a- again, it's just an open dialogue, it'll be a working session, share what we each got and any ideas, and that's all, is that okay? Okay?
We're gonna make, make.
Okay.
Okay, a couple other things, uh, arena advertisement, and we don't need action, but I need a little bit of direction, um, you know, we have, uh, adverti- advertisers that pay on an annual basis to, um, advertise on the Zamboni, advertise on the scoreboard over there, it's different than the football field and, uh, baseball and softball field. It's different than the football field and, uh, baseball and softball field where, you know, those are kinda one-time donations and your name's on the scoreboard forever. These are annual. And so there has been some conversation, we have very limited spectators this year. Some you could argue is, uh, televised, but they don't televise the scoreboard and all the advertisers on there. And so I guess what I'm asking the board is would you be okay with us kinda going a two-for-one? You know, and work out payment with the businesses? Advertise this year, do you get next year as well? It's the same fee or, you know, however you wanna pay for it, it's a two-year deal if you do it. You see where I'm going? It's kinda hard to say pay 1,500 to be advertised on the ice or, or on the Zamboni.
Yeah.
And we can hardly have anyone.
To me, it ma- to me, it makes the most sense to, um, go with the, at the two years, um, for the price of it.
I agree.
And I think honestly, like seeing it on the ice, I seen the North Builders was on the ice, it looks amazing down there, looks good.
It doesn't, I mean, some are gonna get more bang for the buck, don't get me wrong. I mean, those are higher costs, just like the Zamboni, I'm sure there's gonna be, watch, I didn't watch the other night the game online, but you're in, they're gonna see the Zamboni occasionally, where you look up at the scoreboard, they're not gonna read those advertisements, even if they do, you know, show the scoreboard. Um, so, uh, some will get more bang for the buck, but they're also paying, um, more money for those spots. So, um, if you're okay, we're gonna move with that and, um, like I say, I don't think we need action on it, um, as long as you're, give me the head nod.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, um, two things, or just a couple more things I wanted to make, make you aware. I was fortunate, I was invited to, um, have a phone conversation with Senator Klobuchar last week. There were, uh, three other superintendents invited. So it was a superintendent from Grand Rapids, uh, Virginia, and, uh, I think two harbors. Don't, don't quote me on that, there were four of us. And one, uh, person from Range Mental Health. And she just wanted to have a conversation about COVID and what we were seeing, how things were going, um, take our, you know, um, take our thoughts, it was an hour phone conference, and, um, I was very pleased and I, I, I think, you know, the, the conversations were on board with, you know, difficulties we've had, challenges, um, whether it was in funding, whether it was in doing things, but she was looking for more of a rural focus and we were definitely different sized schools, so, um, happy to be invited, don't know how I got on the list, but, um, it was, it was a nice use of an hour, let's put it that way.
Kevin, that's, that's really awesome. Thank you for advocating for our, you know, district.
Yeah.
Um, with like that, appreciate it.
So anyway, that was good. Um, couple other things I would like to recognize, and I just gotta find it here, um, and I, I don't think I will, um, don't think I will embarrass him, but I was notified that, uh, Chair Saxton has reached the milestone of 100 hours of MSBA, I'm gonna call it education, and, um, I think it's worth just noting and, um, thanking him, you know.
I, I got, I got this in the mail the other day and I put it on my page because it was kinda funny, we were, we were joking about it at our house and I didn't even realize it was a thing. So it was 100 hours for training in the last four years. And, uh, I couldn't imagine that, I've been to much more training than a lot of you guys. I mean, I've been to some of the additional training, but, um, I don't know how they tally it, so.
I don't, and just like us, when we go for, uh, service credits, if we go to MSBA, we, you know, it might be a six hours per day or five, you know, it's, you don't get 24 hours so to speak, um, for the whole thing. But I just, I, I think it's worth acknowledging and, um, keep going and, and the, uh, the same goes to the rest, it's not a competition, but, um, it does add value to, I think, our services we learn, so. Um, just about done here. Uh, the Ching Family Collaborative, you approved the agreement, annual or, um, every two-year agreement, but we were going through the bylaws and for the most part, I'll just be honest with you, we get a little bit of service, um, we don't get financial money, it's went down drastically over the years. Um, it's kinda funded through some time studies and things like that, but we do get a person to come over and work with some of our students through Northland Counseling. But that collaborative needs a school board member on it. Um, is, I've been on, I've, I, I wanna say for my seven years now, we've never had a school board member, none of the districts have, but as they dusted off their bylaws, I'm supposed to be on it as superintendent or a representative from the school, but we're supposed to also have a school board member and actually a student rep as well. So I'm looking for a volunteer, if someone is interested from the board. Uh, it meets for about an hour every other month. Um, we're doing a virtual right now, otherwise we normally meet in, uh, forest land, they're usually at 11 or one o'clock, um.
Kevin, do you mind saying the organization one more time?
It's called the Cooch Family Collaborative.
Oh, okay, I, I'm aware of it.
Focusing on mental health and meeting the needs, we get, I wanna say, very part-time person, um, to come work with some students. We used to get funded where we had a full-time, Tim, help me out, what, what did we call that? Family home interventionists that could come in and work with people that didn't necessarily have IEPs but were struggling. We, we get a similar service now, but it's way reduced. We don't get a full-time person. We, we get, I don't know, 20 hours a week maybe. Indus gets, you know, a little bit, Bull Fork used to, I don't know if they get anymore, but, um, and then they tried doing some other things. We've brought a speaker in to back us at one time, I forget, on a mental health kind of, um, you know, community wellbeing speaker and a few other things. It's not a large commitment, but it, hey, any, any benefit?
I'll do it, I'll do it.
Or it looks like Rocks, Pope Cop, is there anybody else interested? I, this, this is certainly in everybody's, um, or not everybody's, but many of you guys' wheelhouse, um, thank you for volunteering, Rock.
Okay, and Rocks, I will get, get your name passed on and keep you informed. We don't have another meeting, we just met last week, and so it'll be in March sometime. And, uh, Tara Besch, I think typically sends out a doodle poll, you know, with three or four dates right now, and we'll get you added on, on the list.
Okay, is it gonna go through which email? My school email or?
Which, that would be preferred if I send it to your school email.
Yes, do that, please, yep.
And just so you're aware, we will also be posting and trying to find a student representative if anyone has ideas, um, and we can coordinate, you know, hopefully getting them to, you know, maybe, um, just Zoom from here, um, and we'll, we'll work through that.
So I hate to, I hate to butt in, but more of like just a point of order, because I do appreciate Rocks, I'm sure nobody's gonna hop in, but I, I, nobody else really had a chance to hop on that. Um, not that, so is anybody else interested in that same thing? Um, or are you guys all comfortable with Rocks advocating for that?
I was a part of that as, um, in my previous school board role and I'd certainly be an alternate, you know, if, if that would be a need as well. It certainly was interesting. But like, I agree with what Kevin said, I think that that, over the year that, over the years, that funding has been much more, has been significantly reduced over the years.
Yeah, and, and just so Emily, just so you're aware, and there's, I, I don't think any conflict of interest, aren't they? Amy, uh, is it Amy Black?
Is Amy on it? Okay.
Yeah, she, she does, well, she represents the Northland Counseling, you, you know, and like you say, I don't, there would be no issue, but ju- just so you're aware, it's, um, yeah, would love to have anyone interested, so.
And I can check with Allison too, I was wondering that in my head too, if it would be a conflict, because I did know that, that the likelihood that Northland would be represented consistently would be there.
Yeah, and they are, I don't think, because again, well, that's my opinion.
Well, I think there's also plenty of opportunities going forward and committees or groups or working sessions to really bring mental health, you know, as a priority, you know, for us going forward, especially with the, uh, current board members that we have. So I think no matter what, there's gonna be opportunities to improve, uh, that a lot more coming up, hopefully we can all get involved in that. So thanks Rocks for stepping up and doing that.
Sure.
If you have a, a reserve, if you can't make it or, um, decide you don't wanna do it.
Two more things and I'll be done. Normally I'm not this, well, I shouldn't say I'm not long-winded, but, um, I again have been, uh, questioned a couple different times over the last month on our activity fees for extracurricular activities. And again, we have talked about this as a board level, never took action, but, you know, most of the sports have not had a full season so to speak, and why aren't we adjusting our fees? And I'll just be honest, I'm not recommending that we do. Um, my explanation has been, yeah, we have had a shortened season, but just so you're aware, and I'm just gonna pick the 87.50, I think that's the highest activity fee. If you multiply that by 30, 40 kids in an activity, that fee doesn't even cover the head coach, let alone, I mean, so, and, and just throwing out there, they, they've gotten a, a big bang for the buck, we have, you know, the, the voters have, you know, years ago, did a, um, operating refer- referendum levy to reduce the cost in half and we've left them the same. But unless there's a will from the board, we've been charging the going rate, not prorating, you know, I don't know how many weeks the winter sports have got this year, you know, hopefully it's, um, significant and what happens if your team, you know, gets shut down for COVID or whatever, um, you know. So I'm just throwing it out there, we're leaving it as is. Fall had a somewhat reduced season, we charged the, the going rate so to speak. If the board wants to do something different, we're gonna have to address it at some point, but otherwise, we're just.
I'd be open to hearing what other people think about it. Um, I, I would also, uh, be curious on, um, the amount of scholarships that are going on to be used during this time. I mean, see if, or if they're all pretty much, uh, tapped into, and that would maybe kinda indicate a need, uh, maybe that there is a need to lower, um, fees if, if all our scholarships are taken up by kids and stuff like that. Um, definitely would hate for that to ever inhibit a kid, but it is so low. I, I agree, our, our, our fees are very low compared to most districts for that.
Well, i- in my opinion, it sounds like they had a bigger bang for their buck before and now they're still getting, uh, a big bang for their buck, it's just not quite as, as large. So there's still, it still looks like it's quite a, a nice, uh, not too high of a fee compared to what they're getting and the costs of everything, that's, uh, the, the expenses of everything for the programs. So I say leave it unless, unless all those scholarships are being used up, then I say we gotta rethink it.
Now, let me look at it.
And, and no student, and I'll just be upfront, we get, you know, a little bit of scholarship money through the High School League Foundation, but no student will not participate. Um, you know, if they can't pay, and I'm just gonna be honest though, you know, if, I'm just gonna use myself for an example, if I came and said, my, you know, my daughter can't play because we can't afford it, first of all, I don't qualify for free and reduced, so we're not gonna qualify. You see what I'm getting at? We work with any family that, um, justly, you know, has a, has a need. Um, but if it's someone like myself that just doesn't wanna pay or wants to, hey, I'm broke, I can't, you gotta meet certain criteria, so I just want the board up, you know, aware of that. But as far as I know, we don't have an issue right now of, um, you know, we're taking care of anyone that may be in that case. And there are some other groups that have helped from time to time with, um, you know, kids and families. Um, Indian Ed, for instance, has had funds and helped some of their families from time to time in need and as well as a few generous donors from time to time.
Okay.
Any other comments on that before I finish my last?
I agree with you, Kevin. That's paid throughout the year, uh, throughout the years we've paid, I think it's very reasonable. Um, and I know it's unfortunate just here and I, I have heard before that there's been opportunities for support, like you're saying, so I'm, I'm with you on that too. And we, we reach cap, I have two kids and we reach the cap almost every year, um, where we don't pay for spring sports because we've already reached the yearly cap, which is also very reasonable, I think.
Okay, and the last thing I was just gonna mention and I, um, just so you're aware, um, one of the board members, and, and I think it's very, um, um, very appropriate, uh, asked for an update on, uh, goals. And so, n- not for tonight, it came today, but I just want the board aware, we, um, myself as well as administration, will put a little document together to kinda update where we are on our district goals. If you recall back in, I wanna say November, we set three, um, short-term goals, and so in February, we will bring not a, um, how would I say it? Not a long in-depth paper on what's going on, but some updates, highlights of, uh, the three-goal areas. So, um, that is all I have, unless anyone has any questions. The only other thing I wanna throw out, and I gotta look, obviously I know Ted is chair, I need some signatures tomorrow on a couple documents that have to go. So Ted, and who is, let me just look here. Ted, are you gonna be around?
Yes, I can be in, um, about nine o'clock-ish in the morning.
They're already sitting down on my, you know, where we set them down in my office. Um.
Okay.
I'm just looking at her.
Who was it, uh?
The clerk, uh, Tony, are, are you around tomorrow?
Yep, I actually just emailed Stacy at four o'clock today, asking if there was like a day or time that I can come in each week and, you know, sign papers or do whatever she needs, so.
Okay, so, and of course it's different now, normal. And most of the time we remember to sign them. What we're doing right now is, if you walk into my office, um, right outside the office is that cabinet, and we have folders, one has the chair, one has clerk, and one has chair and clerk, and they're all in there to be signed.
Is there a certain time you want them done by?
Whenever you can come.
Whenever you can come.
Okay.
Usually you have a little bit more time and I take way too much wipperty wippity with it, and Kevin and Stacy hate it, but, um, it, if you do it timely generally, you know, within a week, it's fine.
Yeah, no, I can do it tomorrow, I just wasn't sure if it had to be done right away in the morning or after.
Oh, alright.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Does anybody have anything, uh, for Kevin, um, at this time?
Well, uh, you know, as, just on an aside, now that Terry Murray is gone, I was wondering if the board was gonna assign a class, uh, or a board clown, or are we gonna have a big go- gaping hole? Because we're, I really miss Terry.
I'll tell you why, I don't think you assign that, I think it, it just happens.
Oh, I see, okay.
Um, we'll see, uh, to be determined, um.
Rocks, you might have just nominated yourself.
Yeah.
I, I don't think so, but.
Do you know what? Some of the best times I've had on school board meetings were when I was hanging out with Rocks, or at the, uh, events, and some of the silliest times too, so.
(laughing).
Okay, committee reports, Community and Advisory Board, O R A, Dan.
You guys hear me?
Yep.
Um, so this is a mailer that, uh, is gonna be sent out to 209 families, um, who are within the age bracket for early childhood family education. Um, it'll go out probably tomorrow or for, or, uh, Thursday. Um, and it's just a little more specific to kinda the programming, what we offer, some of the things that we've had in the past, um, and then what's coming up for third quarter. And I actually have to add a couple things because to add the bulk mailer, it'll have to be six pages, so we're gonna put on some stuff that we're doing for Valentine's Day. Um, and then I just wanted to welcome all the new board members, I look forward to working with you. Uh, Joanne, I think you're on our, uh, advisory council, and then Tony. Um, so look forward to kinda having your guys' energy and input into our programming. Um, classes real quick, uh, taekwondo is back up and going. Um, we have a safe sitter class that's scheduled for February. Uh, Pete moved from Virginia to Duluth, so some of the defensive driving stuff is a little more complicated. Um, so we're kinda trying to work that piece out, and then I've got a couple online offerings that I'm thinking within the next few weeks will have kinda wrapped up and be able to see if the community is interested in them or not. Um, one of them's a voiceover company that works with people, um, if they're interested in getting into that line of work, so we'll see how that goes. Uh, when I first started, Ted asked for a report each month that would spell out our specific financials, uh, behind the classes that we've offered. And I just wanted to bring it forward to the new board members, I haven't forgotten that piece, Ted, but with COVID and with blah, 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 with me trying to learn and, and, and all that good stuff, we just haven't had that. But in the future, once we kinda get things back to rolling, that'll be something that we'll hopefully be able to provide to you each month in your board packets. Uh, the things that you guys might get questions about real quick, swimming pool, the pool is open from 6:30 to 7:30 in the mornings. Um, nights and weekends are still under consideration, but, uh, because of the governor's kinda starts and stops, we're waiting till at least late February, probably early March before we would bring that, that back. And then the ski rentals, um, we had a generous donation of ski equipment in the summer, uh, but it turned out that it's, uh, a lot of older equipment. Um, initially I kinda had some pricing that was for nights and weekends, um, and that wasn't met real favorably by the community, so we kind of ended up extending it to rent out for the, uh, for the seat, on a seasonal rate, which really didn't end up being worth the amount of time that I've put into be, learning how to assemble skis and. amount of time that I've put into learning how to assemble skis, and, and one of the people blew out a side of the shoe and called, and well, can I glue it, can I fix it? It's kind of been a mess, so we're going to continue through this year, but it'll probably be something then, through the advisory council that we'll talk a little bit more detail. The equipment's just really old and outdated and, you know, certainly don't want to look and give horse in the mouth, and I greatly appreciate the donation, and I've learned a lot about ski equipment, but it hasn't been what we maybe thought it would be. And then Stacy and I are going to kind of look at some pricing pieces for that ECFE, the programming, and, and there's some models that other districts are doing that we're kind of using as a roadmap, but that'll obviously be within the budgeting process. And Casey and I are meeting tomorrow to discuss the community education portion of the website, to try to see if I can get that to be a little more vibrant and informative, things like this flyer where we can go deeper into details about our ECFE programming and kind of gathering and collecting some preschool information and early childhood screening, and then, of course, get more pieces up about what we offer, so. And then I just want to thank Sandy for her contributions to our PALS program, and that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Are you going to replace Sandy or?
I, I think the plan is that once that population can be back safely, certainly there's the need for it, and, and right now, we're doing a lot of stuff where we just kind of send them things, I think you know that, Rox, some of the mailers that have gone out, and there's another one that's going to go out again later this week, and that'll be a monthly kind of thing, but right, you know, the need just isn't there, I mean, Tim sends, Paris Down, that helped me with that stuff on a Wednesday, every couple Wednesdays or one, one or two Wednesdays every three weeks, and, you know, so the, the need just isn't there at the moment, but I would, I would suspect that as long as COVID doesn't turn us all into zombies, that yeah, I would think that that would be something that we'd look to certainly, you know, it's important population to me and, and it's people that I want to continue to make sure we are meeting their needs, so.
Okay.
She, she filled a very vital role.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Dan. Recreation Commission, I'll be honest with you, I'm not quite sure, Tony, are you still on that one? I know you were on it before.
Yes, we are meeting tomorrow.
Okay. And who else was on that one that we assigned, was it Bruce and Emily or Joanne?
I don't, I don't have my list up here.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure that everybody that's supposed to be on that knows about it, I guess, is.
Joanne, were you on that one? Yeah, I know Bruce was, I'm sure.
Okay.
No word, Joanne?
Yep.
And you know about the meeting tomorrow, then?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So, there's no, there's no, nothing to say about that, then? So, that would be it, I, I was thinking at the beginning of the meeting, I, I should have, if I hadn't welcomed the teachers and the staff that were in attendance, and so thanking them afterwards when they've all dropped off is less appreciated, but it's, I still mean it the same, it was nice, it's been nice during COVID to have all these extra people attend for our teachers and stuff like that, I think it helps get information out there a little bit better when it comes right from the horse's mouth, so to speak. I will entertain a motion, if there's nothing else, to adjourn at 6:16 PM.
So, moved.
Got a motion by Rox, and a second by Tony, we will do a roll call vote, Tony Corby?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes, yes.
Ted Saxton?
Yes.
Roxanne Scostadich?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
All right, it carries unanimously 6-0, thank you to everybody who attended.